Calling to order the Monday, December 16th, 2019, regular meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henan.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Mayor Turbrack.
First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Are any changes or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us today is Pastor Zach Dunlap.
Let's pray. Good and loving God, in this season often associated with hope, joy, and love, we recognize that there are also many in our community who face feelings of despair, loneliness, or exhaustion, people whose holiday celebrations this year will not be the same with an empty seat at the table. We lift up each and every one of these people to you and ask that you would grant them your peace. Guide our city council members this evening. Grant them grace, discernment, and wisdom as we, together, community members and elected officials alike, seek to lead this community for the good of everyone in it. We all come from different backgrounds and beliefs, but it's in the strong name of Jesus I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We are now moving into the citizens' comments portion of our meeting. You may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of council, or the city staff, or any department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided on the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Okay. Moving on, Ms. Mitchell, will you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 38th City Council meeting on Monday, December 2nd, 2019. Warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1345. Ordinance number O1419. Matter of considering the second reading and adoption of a zoning ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend sections 138-363, 138-387, 138-417, 138-427, 138-442, 138-457, 138-472, 138-487, and add new section 138-528 to Chapter 138 Zoning to establish zoning requirements for marijuana businesses. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for 10 days at the Berkeley City Hall Library and Community Center. And Resolution R4219. Matter of adopting a resolution honoring the 60th anniversary of the founding of Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Councilmember Henan. Are there any corrections or additions? Okay. Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions Presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Blanchard to read R4219. Before he does that, I would like to invite anyone from the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance who is here today to step up to the podium.
Go on.
I know who you are.
I get that a lot. Come on. They can't hide.
Our resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan honoring the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance for its 60th anniversary. Whereas the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance is celebrating its 60th anniversary in the community, having been established in 1959, and whereas the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance is an integral part of the community in providing services to families of Berkeley, and whereas the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance is a nonprofit organization that provides short-term, family-centered counseling services for young people during challenging times, and whereas the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance also provides a number of services outside of counseling, including mentorship matching, family education, youth recognition, camp scholarships, and annual school supply drive, and the Millar Ross Memorial Scholarships. And whereas for the 2019 holiday season, the organization has matched 40 local children with generous donors that will provide holiday gifts, and whereas in 2019, the organization has provided casework services for 59 youth and their families, and provided five mentorship matches that will provide guidance to the youth. And whereas in 2019, the organization also provided camp scholarships to 72 students in the Berkeley School District, recognized 39 students for their positive contributions to the schools and communities, and presented three Colory Scholarships to the Berkeley High School graduates. And now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves that the Council of the City of Berkeley hereby recognizes the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance for their exceptional commitment to serving the City of Berkeley, and thank them for the amazing work they have done uplifting Berkeley youth in the past 60 years. Introduced and passed at a regular council meeting on Monday, December 16th, 2019, Bridget Dean, Mayor Protam.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Pete, do you have some words you'd like to share with us?
I do, if I may. I'm Pete Kelly. I'm currently the board chair of Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance. Became involved with the organization when I was the youth officer at Public Safety and saw firsthand some of the crucial interventions that were provided and assistance that really, really made a difference in the youth and the families that we served. My one story that I like to tell, I can't do publicly, someone might recognize who that involves, so I'm not at liberty to do that, but it chokes me up to this day to recount the details of that situation. But allow me to please introduce Kelly Smith, our office secretary and jack-of-all-trades. Shirley Petrino is our vice chairperson. Betty Smith, our longtime volunteer. Heather Lackey, our board secretary. And Greg Gillum, our longtime treasurer, who keeps all that stuff straight, which is over my head. If I might also mention, we are currently conducting a hat, mitt, and glove drive to enable the kids to at least keep some semblance of warmth out at recess when they're, for a variety of situations, they don't have those things. There's a box at the library, so for anybody listening, please keep that in mind, and if you have some extras that you can perhaps provide, we'll get them to the right place. So, thank you for your recognition. It is an honor. It's an honor to serve. And I will add one thing, that Berkeley has, I think, six years on Huntington Woods. Huntington Woods came later and became part of the Berkeley Huntington Woods chapter, but anyway, it's a great partnership.
Thank you so much. And honestly, I do, I have a word, or more, but I am truly, truly grateful that, for all the work you do, and that you are here in Berkeley. Betty Smith, I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege. Betty Smith has been involved with the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance for a lot of years, I'm just going to say.
1972.
There you go. And I think that that is remarkable. I mean, when you think about the service to your community, I'm just going to tell you, Betty can be your example and role model of that. We are so fortunate and grateful to have you here in Berkeley, and thank you for your continued service, and all of you, you all do a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Oath of Office. Oath of Office to newly-appointed Public Safety Officer Brianna Burge.
Hi, Brianna Burge.
Hi, Brianna Burge. Having been duly appointed as Public Safety Officer. Having been duly appointed as Public Safety Officer. For the City of Berkeley. For the City of Berkeley. Do hereby solemnly swear. Do hereby solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State. The Constitution of the State. Of Michigan, sorry. Of Michigan. The Charter and ordinances of the City of Berkeley. The Charter and ordinances of the City of Berkeley. And that I will perform the duties. And that I will perform the duties. Of my office to the best of my ability. Of the office to the best of my abilities. Congratulations. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere, Brianna. I'm sure the chief wants to say a few words. No, stay up there.
I've asked Brianna to keep her speech under 45 minutes.
Yeah, that's what this is for.
I just would like to welcome PSO Burge. She's a United States Army veteran, which is our fourth in the last three years we've hired.
Excellent.
And it just kind of happened that way. She was the best of the job, so we're happy to have her, and we welcome her to the City of Berkeley. It was a very competitive process for her to be here, and we're glad she's here. She'll be going to the Fire Academy in February, and then going to medical first responder probably sometime later next year also, so still a lot to do, but she's got the big hurdle over.
Excellent. Brianna, is there anything you would like to say?
Just thank you for this opportunity, and I'm very excited to start working.
Excellent. Counsel, any remarks?
Welcome aboard, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want, I don't know if the viewers at home can see, the show of support from all of Berkeley Public Safety.
Welcome aboard. Amazing. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you for your service and welcome.
Thank you very much. Board is going to be around.
Anyway, there's an incredible show of support here from our public safety officers. We are very fortunate in this community to have such a trained, talented staff. I have seen them in action firsthand, and I do know that they really function as a team, they function as a unit. And just from, as a resident, the part that I see, and I am very grateful that we have all of you here in Berkeley, and Brianna, we're so excited to have you here, and welcome, and hopefully I won't have to, like, see you at my house. Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M9619. Matter of approving the appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M9619?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Okay, motion to approve by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. We advertised the position that we had vacant, created by the election of Ms. Natalie Price to the City Council, and lo and behold, a very familiar face applied to be part of that great group. Not surprisingly, given her long history of service to our community, Ms. Eileen Stedman has applied to continue, to finish out the term, expiring in July 2021, on the Citizens' Advisory Committee, and she's also applied to join the Beautification Advisory Committee for a term expiring in 2021. As you recall, that Advisory Committee does not have any threshold for membership, so come one, come all. And then we also have an appointment to the Tree Board, Mr. Turner, and who you'll remember is, not only is it a reappointment, but we just had the great opportunity of honoring him as an Eagle Scout, so an impressive young man. I'm happy to have him interested in putting a second term in as a student member of the Tree Board.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M9619.
Henan.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, please read number four on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M9719. Matter of approving the appointments to the Master Plan Steering Committee.
Is there a motion to approve M9719?
So moved.
Support.
By Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, ma'am. So at our last meeting, the City Council, by resolution, created the ad hoc Master Plan Steering Committee. In that same resolution, there were a number of positions created for that body, a total of 15 possible. Some with very specific ties to boards and commissions, so we went through an application process on that as well, and yield the slate that you have before you. We received a number of applications. We were very happy with the outpouring of people that were interested and couldn't wait to volunteer for this important process. Had the pleasure of trying to pare that down, and so, keeping in mind sort of a diverse population, Berkeley's a wonderful place, and it's got a lot of different kinds of residents and a lot of different experiences and professional backgrounds and length of tenure as a Berkeley resident, all sort of assembled into this group here. I'll read the individual members. Myself and the Community Development Director, those two professional positions were expressly named, so myself and Aaron Schluto. One member of the City Council, Mr. Gavin, has applied to be on that position. One member of Planning Commission, Ms. Kempner, applied to be on that, fulfill that role. One member of the ZBA, which the Chair, Paul Evans, applied to be a member of. One member of the Downtown Development Authority, which the Chair of that body, Mr. Andy Gilbert, applied to be on. We did not receive an application from a Berkeley High School representative, but that position was created as a named position on that as well. Then we had various members of city boards and commissions at large. Ms. Tricia Losi, from representing the Tree Board, applied to be on that position. From the Beautification Committee, Mr. Dan Mihajewski, applied to be on that committee. Mr. Mark Richardson, applied to represent the Environmental Advisory Board. Mr. Mike Kirby, applied to represent the Recreation Advisory Board. And then we had a number of community members-at-large positions created by the same resolution as well, recommending Mr. Kurt Hight, Ms. Alexandra Donnelly, Ms. Audra Crowley, and Ms. Carolyn Crager, to round out the 15-member body.
Thank you.
City manager, just wondering, if the high school position is not filled, do we have a process for filling it, or what will happen to that position if it is not filled?
So we're going to make another attempt to getting that position filled. We think, based on just sort of timing with end of the semester and finals looming, it may have been a difficult time for someone to also be thinking about joining the Master Plan Steering Committee. We will make another attempt to try to get a high school student. If we're unable to be successful there, we'll come back with a recommendation that, by resolution, we would amend that to include an additional community member-at-large and capture that. And so, and the professional background of the applicants, Ms. Carolyn Crager is the Assistant Principal at the high school, and so she can help us get access sort of the collective brilliance of our high school students, and bring that perspective to the table there. So that would be our recommendation, if we're unable to fill the community-at-large, or the student position, we would just simply add another community-at-large position.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M9719?
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's agenda.
Ordinance number O1519. Matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to add new Article 15 Marijuana Businesses to Chapter 30 Businesses of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances, to adopt local licensing regulations and operational standards for marijuana businesses. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for 10 days at the Berkeley City Hall Library and Community Center.
Is there a motion to approve O1519?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgarten and Mr. Sterin?
Just a quick introduction. This is continuation of the conversation that we had beginning of the last meeting. There was some discussion about the second reading of Section 24. We had a couple of members of the audience make some suggested changes. Council did believe that they were worthwhile investigating. Mr. Sterin, along with our internal marijuana policy team, Mr. Hill and Ms. Schluto, took a look at making some changes there, and those changes are reflected on page seven, subsection 24 on that page. And then also you'll see changes in the Red Line document, as well as, there's a section added on page 11 as well. And then there was a correction that was made, brought to us by Mr. Blanchard, and, oh, was there another section there?
Same section.
Same section, thank you. And so those are the bulk of the changes from the previous one, so it's really just the two sections that have been affected from the previous reading.
Okay. We did also correct the typo that Councilmember Price had pointed out. And just to expand, just very briefly and minimally on those changes, the change that was made to that subsection 24 on page seven, again, was just to try to clarify, simplify that language. I did add, and then I eliminated, the reference to Step 1, which I thought might make things clearer, because that's what the Michigan, that's the terminology the Michigan Department of licensing and regulation uses, but it immediately prompted so many questions, I thought, well, that's not clarifying anything. So I took it back out. We all know, it means prequalification, and the words Step 1 were not necessary. And the longer change that appears on page 11 of your ordinance is really in response to what was probably the lengthiest of the discussions we had at that last meeting, which, again, related to the prequalification and what type of prequalification would be needed. So we've added that language, we did it with input from some of the legal representatives of prospective applicants that were involved, just following up on the discussion we had, and some internal discussions, just to make it clear that, you know, we are requiring the prequalification, it can be under either the medical marijuana license prequalification or the recreational. As a practical matter, to get the recreational, you have to go through the same process as for the medical marijuana licensing, and we just wanted to clarify here that, basically, after someone has been approved tentatively for their local license, and that qualifies them to move to the next step, which is to go to the Planning Commission for site plan approval, right? We make it clear here that they've got a year to get everything done, including following through with the state to get their licensing in order, and actually implementing the site plan. We do obtain, or excuse me, include a provision here which provides up to an additional 180-day extension for folks who are able to show good cause. I mean, we recognize there are some things that are beyond applicants' control, such as the state licensing process.
Right.
And how quickly they move. It appears so far that the state is moving with lightning speed by state bureaucracy standards. But that's for now. Things can change, but at least the initial rush, if you will, after the November 1, not deadline, but rather opening day for accepting licenses, the state was able to turn around, I think, inside of a month, during the month of November, I think they turned around, I think it was north of 40 applications inside of a month. So I'm sure there will be many more coming, and that could slow down, but it looks like the state and the state structure and the way the governor has reorganized it, at least so far, is moving far more efficiently than the prior state regulatory agency was. So those are the changes that we've made. Be happy to answer any questions, or elaborate on any points that council would like.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. Just to elaborate on that final point about the one year and 180-day, you mentioned that the state currently seems to be off to a good start in terms of the timing, the expediency with which they process those. Just so we're clear, folks can do multiple paths, right? They can pursue the state's pathway and keep that moving at the same time as they do the Berkeley, you know, Planning Commission, site plan kind of stuff, right? Meaning one is not locked to be finished before the other. They can move them both forward.
I mean, that is correct. There are some things that are part of the state licensing process. There's multiple steps, as you might expect, and some of those steps after, you know, background checks and applicant eligibility, do require actual vetting by the state of the establishment, the business plan, fire inspections, those sorts of things that do require the applicant to be a little farther along, or maybe a lot farther along with the implementation stage. And again, there could be things that aren't entirely within the applicant's control, including getting the state out to the site to, you know, to do what's needed to do. And that's why we thought it was appropriate and reasonable to add that provision for the possibility of the extension. The council has made it very clear that if we're going to do this, we want to move with all deliberate speed and be able to process applicants. I think you're losing your job, Bridget. The idea is to move with all deliberate speed and to move diligently, but we aren't, the point of that, though, isn't to try to trap applicants either.
Correct.
And say, gotcha, you missed your deadline, you're out, the next applicant is in. That's not the intention at all. We just want serious applicants, and once we have them, we expect to process it with, you know, with all due speed, and we expect the applicants to follow through and not sit on their licenses once they've been approved, or once site plan approval's been obtained.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Thanks, John. Next, who else? Questions, comments? Want to move on here? Councilmember Blanchard?
My only comment is I'm glad that, thank you for the correction on that one line. It was quite confusing, and I think that this helps a lot, makes it a lot easier to read.
I didn't mention that, but Councilmember Blanchard's referring to that subparagraph I on page 11, and he made a very good catch on some awkward language that didn't seem so awkward when we wrote it, but upon reflection was like, yeah, that's got to be fixed.
Additional questions, comments on the proposed ordinance, 1519?
fixed."
Additional questions, comments on the proposed ordinance, 1519?
My name's Brian Benke. I believe everyone up here received an email from me this morning. I'm a business owner, okay? I haven't been in the business. I've been looking into, in fact, I've been talking to Matt probably for the last couple of months. The biggest issue is because I wasn't in the business, I was shut out because of Number 24. I can go out there and get prequalified, but because of 20, Number 24 that you just changed, it wouldn't matter. I can invest the money that it takes. It takes, I don't know if you guys know how much, I'm sure the attorney does, how much time and effort and money it takes to get prequalified, okay? To go through that, to go through that, and I'm speaking too for the business owners and all the residents. They're really shut out of this. Right now that you change it, I can go ahead, now I can prequalify. The issue is, you don't have time from the state, because it takes three, a minimum of three months to get a medical license. Before, you required a medical license, and then you required that you had to go in, and at least, I believe, I'm not sure exactly the wording, but something about you had to show that you sent in to get your adult license. You can't do that, and only after that can you now apply for a license, okay? Unless you're in the, unless you're in the business, you couldn't have done that. It's impossible. So you shut out really all the business owners and all the residents unless they went out on blind faith. They didn't know, or they didn't read it properly, or blind faith, hoping that they invested all their time in, in this, you know, their assets into doing something, and if come, you might change Number 24. And I guess, bottom line is, I believe that you should open it up and allow folks now that weren't in the business enough time to apply to get a medical license.
Thank you, Your Honor. So just as a clarification, the, the changes to Section 24 talk about prequalification, right? So that, I think, would alleviate some of those concerns that were just raised. Is there any additional guidance on that that you could offer?
Well, just, I guess, just to, to clarify, the, I mean, we did make some changes to that paragraph. The prequalification requirement, though, has been in the draft ordinance for quite a while. We just made some refinements that didn't change that requirement, but just clarified...
So let me ask you a question, then, just so I understand. Again, I'm not an attorney, I'm not in this business, I'm not the type of person, again, most of these people in the business, they'll go out there and they'll sign up everywhere, knowing that it's a crapshoot and to win one out of 10. I'm in the city of Berkeley, I own a business, I want to do this, okay? The issue is, and tell me if I'm wrong, is if you kept it the way it was, would I have been able, if I was prequalified, would you have, would I have been able to get a license? Would I have been able to meet what you had in 24 prior to this, if I was never in the business?
If you were never in the business, you could still be, you still could get prequalified. You wouldn't be, if you weren't in the business, you wouldn't have been able to move all the way through and actually obtain a state license.
No, I'm not saying that. Would I have been able to get the city license without, without, without at least applying for the adult license?
If you have, if you are prequalified for a medical marijuana license, yes, you can continue for the city license process.
That's not what it read.
That's what it says.
Now it does. I don't believe it did before.
That's one of the things we clarified.
Yeah. When did you clarify it?
We clarified it at the last meeting.
Okay.
So this makes it more open to people who before would have been excluded.
But the only thing is, it doesn't give people enough time. Unless you start it beforehand, it doesn't give you enough time to get prequalified.
Well, that's right, and most did. The law, the law in the state of Michigan's been very clear, the, the law that was approved by the voters a year ago, November, that for the first two years after the state starts accepting applications, which was just last month, only those who are state licensed for medical marijuana will qualify for adult use licenses. So to have any chance at getting a recreational license or an adult use license in Berkeley or anywhere else in the state, one would have had to already started the medical marijuana licensing process.
But I believe you, I don't believe...
And this ordinance reflects that.
I don't think that's the case, though.
Mr. Baumgarten? And for context, myself and our internal policy team, we've taken many, many meetings from, from those that are interested in pursuing this, and those, and it's run a vast array. It's existing business owners have either saw the direction the City Council was going over the last year, and went ahead and began their prequalification process a lot earlier, or they've sought a partner who is operating in the industry as well. So, I don't want to, I don't want to seem like we have closed the door on any, because I, I do know that you'll receive, and we anticipate receiving, a number of applications from existing business owners right here that are operating in Berkeley, not currently operating a marijuana business, but that have invested the time earlier in this process to make sure they have their prequalifications in check.
And they would have had to have blind faith that you would have taken it, because I believe that Number 24, you, you wouldn't be able to...
That's right.
You wouldn't have been able to get a license unless you satisfied Number 24, and you couldn't satisfy Number 24 unless you were currently in the business.
Not necessarily in the business, but to be prequalified, and that's ultimately a policy question for the council to resolve. There are many people who have, have made the effort and investment, and it is an investment. I think the application fee alone is something like a $6,000 nonrefundable fee, plus many people require the assistance of, of legal counsel and others to do it. And so, yes, there is some speculation on a prospective applicant or licensed candidate's part to do that due diligence and preparatory work, if you will, without any guarantee that they are going to get a state license, let alone a local license.
I couldn't even apply for it, though.
The flip side of that, from the city's standpoint, is we know going into this, that as the ordinance is drafted, if it's adopted in this form, we are going to be capping our licenses to three locations. We anticipate that we will be getting more than three applications, perhaps multiples of three applications, and we want to have an efficient process. We recognize that the state, who's been working on this now for a number of years, the first through the medical marijuana, now through the adult use, has a process in place. And to obtain that prequalification, that Step 1 prequalification, that involves the background check and the investigation by the state. The city is not set up, nor do I think we have the inclination to be displacing the state from doing that, or duplicating the state's efforts, but the thought was, we want to deal with people who the state has already prequalified, so that we know, moving forward, that these applicants whose, whose applications we're processing and looking at it are on track to, to get a state license. And when they do get through the local approval process, they should be able to move with all due speed, you know, as I mentioned before, I mean, there's always some bumps in the road that may be beyond their control, but they should be able to move forward. What Mr. Benke is suggesting is that perhaps the city should look at it differently and keep it wide open and let applicants come without, without knowing if they're prequalified or not, and I guess, kind of moving, moving through, and if they ultimately get prequalification, then great. If they don't, well, then we would be back, at least for that particular application, starting over. That's why the prequalification requirement was put in there, is because the City Council and the city administration weren't inclined to go in that direction. But ultimately, it's a council policy call. You can go either way on it, but what we've drafted, we think, is in furtherance of what council has directed.
So, Mr. Benke, hold on one second, please. This whole process, as you're well aware, has been a bit of a moving target, a lot of changes, not only from the state, a lot of discussion and conversation with councils of what we want each of these ordinances to look like, and where we're finally at the point now where we're, we're getting ready to discuss the second reading or approve the second reading to continue moving this forward. Many folks, I'm sure, have reached out to many of us, or reached out to other people in the state or in the city, certainly, I know Mr. Baumgarten has met with many, about the potential of applying for one of these licenses and what that might mean. Some have, as you mentioned, on pure speculation, taken steps to do that in the event that this passes, they can apply. And as we've heard, there will be multiples of those three, significant multiples of three applicants for this process. I understand your concern, and at least your, your question with, with, you know, holding off so that people who maybe haven't started that process yet have time before this? Is that what you were hitting around to?
No, what I'm saying, well, what I'm saying is, I could have applied a year ago, or I could have applied a long time ago, okay, and done everything, did, did everything on all 29 things to apply to this, at least the way I read it. I'm not an attorney, but I've, I actually talked to someone, and they, they told me, "Try to get some micro thing, and then you can do that, but you can't get an adult license unless you're already in the business." So even if I did apply, the way it read is, I, I could have invested my money, which I am going to have to hire a consultant or hire an attorney, because I can't do, I don't know, I mean, there's so much stuff that you gotta do, and, and do everything, invest all the time and the money, but I would get shut, I would never be able to get a license, because the way it was written, the way it was written, I would have been stopped because I wouldn't be allowed, because I wasn't prior in the business, I wouldn't be allowed to, I wouldn't be able to get a copy of the applicant's notice of prequalification status from, by Michigan Marijuana Regulatory Agency to Rule 7 of the Adult Marijuana Establishment. So basically, that would have shut me out. So I could have done everything and invested everything, and the way it was written, it didn't, it didn't matter, because you would have shut me down until you just changed it. So all I'm saying is, since you changed it, you should allow people, and maybe people did that, they do it on blind faith, or they didn't read it, or they didn't understand it. But the way I understood it is, I, no matter what I did, no matter what I invested, no matter how I scored, I can score every point, I could have, I could have done it way, I could have done it early, but I would have been shut out on the technicality, because I couldn't, I couldn't apply for the adult license.
Thank you for, for coming and bringing that to our attention. I will say that this has been something that we've discussed multiple times up to this point. It's been on the website, and if there was, you know, the concern over...
And it should have been changed.
Well, that's why we have second readings, because sometimes there are things that...
And that's why I'm bringing it up, because I see now it's being changed.
Clearly now, okay, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henan?
I brought up the previous version that we had, and the language, Mr. Benke still would not have been able to get a city license under the previous language. So, in that regard, nothing has changed.
Anything else, other questions, any other comments? I know, 1519. Seeing no additional comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on O-1519?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
No.
Price?
Yes.
Trebek?
Yes.
O-1519 has been approved. We now move on to item number six. Ms. Mitchell, please.
Discussion, matter of discussing a draft system for scoring applications for marijuana business licenses in Berkeley.
Okay. This is a discussion item. There will not be any formal action taken on the merit system points criteria this evening. I want to make that very clear. We are looking for feedback from council members. I will certainly entertain feedback from the folks that are here as well, but this is not going to deviate from our previous conversations. I understand that there may be some aspects of this criteria that may fit better for some of your ideas and others that maybe won't fit as well. I completely understand that. But again, this is not the time to discuss why these things should be changed to necessarily fit your specific interests. It's in making sure that we have the best criteria in place for the city. I'm certainly interested to hear feedback. And the actual decision-making will happen in our, in our first January meeting, when we will pass by resolution the actual merit system points criteria. I assume that that is all very clear, and that there are not any additional questions on how this process is going to play out. Again, this is not a change from our previous meetings when we're discussing this. We do need to hear feedback, because we are going to need to make this decision at the next meeting, but I am not interested in hearing everybody's business plans. Thanks. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. As we've discussed in the past, our internal policy team has been working to, to synthesize all of our conversations, our goals, our intent behind even opting into this particular use, into a point system that yields the type of results that we were hoping to receive when we initially started talking about this. In order to outline that approach, Mr. Daniel Hill has prepared a presentation, we're working with Ms. Luto.
Hello, everybody. As you can tell, I like putting together nice presentations for you. We'll see if it happens again at the next meeting. So, just to quickly go through, so outlined, the point system has been on the website for quite a while. Just some brief summary here. So points are on an all or nothing scale. So for each section, they either get the points or they get zero points, and that's to present, or to prevent any subjectivity and kind of cover us there. There's no duplicate point values. As you can notice, they go from 25 down to 7. That's to hopefully prevent some ties there. We have baked in some things that make it exceptionally difficult to get 100%. That was intentional. We really want good applicants, but we don't want a bunch of ties. With the new scoring, they total about 304 points, as the licensing ordinance you just passed requires a minimum of 70% in order to be considered in the process, so they need to get 212.8 points to move forward, for full consideration. So here are some general requirements before they even get to the point scoring. So complete application materials, the community development department's checking for completeness, more than 1,000 foot from a school, cannabis business must comply with the existing zoning. That was also passed this evening, you added them to most of the commercial districts. Meet off-street parking requirements, we're using the retail rule of thumb in the zoning ordinance, which is one per 225 square feet. Odor control system, which is required by the state as well as local ordinance, and then all stakeholders are clear of detrimental acts on their record, and so that's part of that background check that gets completed as well. So to begin, so 25 points. This is one of, been one of the biggest conversations from City Council, is investing in the community, some redevelopment, seeing some of our dilapidated buildings, kind of get some life breathed back into them. So anything that is 50% vacant or more, or 50% underused, and it's been for four months or longer. So the goal here is to update developments, and those developments will outlive any sort of market crashes as it relates to marijuana businesses. If the market gets oversaturated and some have to close, that building's still going to be developed in and bring some, some hopeful new life to a new business. 24 points to proposed redevelopment includes a new additional non-marijuana business. This is a separate entity, separate building ingress egress, you can't cut through the marijuana business to get to the coffee shop, and then also has to be on the same premises or contiguous parcel. So here, of course, livens and adds to the business community in Berkeley. 23 points to the proposed site is located in the following areas. This has been discussed before, it's all of the areas that are not in our DDA district, and that's simply due to, DDA district already has extra incentive to invest there and kind of get some, some financial incentive to move there. 22 points to managing stakeholders can demonstrate a history of lawfully operating a business, compliant with federal, state, and local regulations. This was previously, the previous draft was that they had to operate a state-regulated business, and so this was reworded at the feedback of council, and the goal here is to have reputable applicants who have a history of following regulations, such as marijuana 21 points to proposed development does not displace an existing operational business. This was important, as we've heard of developers go around and offer money to businesses to basically close up shop and give them their building. basically close up shop and give them their building. We really want to prevent our existing businesses from being displaced. We think that we have a good culture here of business, and so we like our current business owners and would like for them to thrive as well. 20 points, this is that sub-score. So this breaks down into proposed development and physical improvement. So that includes trees that are non-invasive, public art such as murals, sculptures, installations, green space, and public areas such as alleyways, parking areas, sidewalks, and plazas. Again, further development. In order to get the 20 points, it would satisfy each sub-score. So they can only get five points for each of their subscores. So if they have trees, public art, and green space, but no public areas, they're only getting 15 of the 20. 19 points to proposed redevelopment is projected to add 15 or more new jobs. That includes the cannabis business as well as the non-cannabis use. So the example I used earlier, the coffee shop baristas would be a job, where the majority of those need to be full-time as well. 18 points to property that'll be owner-occupied. This is following that it's perceived that more investment happens in the community by owners of, of the building, and so they're more likely to invest more into the property than those that might lease. 17 points to managing stakeholders have been a commercial or residential property owner in Berkeley, four months or longer. So those folks would have had to buy their property prior to October 28th, 2019. So those folks hoping to squeeze in those extra points right now wouldn't be eligible under this. 16 points to managing stakeholders is a majority owner or stakeholder in an existing Berkeley business, and with at least 50% stake. Of course, we want those reputable applicants that have a history in the community and have operated other businesses. 15 points to managing stakeholder demonstrates at least one year of experience operating a licensed marijuana business, and that's as of their date of application, and includes caregivers, which was previous feedback that we received from council. 14 to proposed development eliminates an existing non-conforming use or structure. This is a new addition since the last time I believe a draft was put out. Here, it's, it's to bring the various aspects of the community more in line with what the intended goals are that are represented in our code of ordinances. So the example I used here is, so new construction, they would basically remove a building that might not meet the setback requirements and would bring it more into form of what's the current code. 13 points for sustainable building materials. Again, following the 2019 energy plan, we're hoping to see more sustainability in the community, and this is one area to incentivize that. 12 points to proposed development incorporates green infrastructure into stormwater management. This was previously just a bucket of 12 points, and so we broke it up into subscores and really were more explicit about what we were hoping to see. And also, those that put more into creating green infrastructure for stormwater, they get more points there. 11 points for the application demonstrates benefits to the community other than increased taxable value. So this is incentivizing passion and care for Berkeley. As we've mentioned, we've met with a number of people that have come in interested in the business. Our key point to them is to get creative here and see what maybe they can invest in the community. 10 points for proposed development add street scape elements, so benches, bike racks, and planners. This is more in the public right-of-way area, closer to the public right-of-way. So it's separate from those previous ones that were mentioned in that bucket of 20. Nine points for disclosing 100% of owners and stakeholders. The state as well as local ordinance only requires 10% or more stake to be reported. So this is just incentivizing full transparency of their business plan. Eight points for all proposed uses do not require any additional variances or waivers at the time of application. So this is encouraging those that are already development-ready and ready to move in quickly. And then seven points for proposed development does not immediately abut residential property. This is a topic that's been, we've given feedback on, and so we've added this so that it would encourage development to have a distance from nearby homes, but by no means would we require it. And that's all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, for going through that. I anticipate there will be some comments, discussion regarding some of the most recent changes in the update that we saw, and also as we move forward to our conversation in early 2020, as we formalize this by resolution. I will first ask for some general feedback and comments from council, and then certainly open it up to everybody else who may be here with some feedback as well. Council, what are your initial, at least, thoughts, or I know there's probably at least a few that we want to discuss a little bit, kind of figure out how we got to where we are? Who would like to start? Councilmember Price.
Thank you for the presentation. I especially found the goals, the reasoning behind each of the criteria really helpful. And I just request that you email that to us, too. I'd like to have a copy of that. Thank you.
Absolutely. And before it's asked, it'll also be on the website.
Oh, fantastic. Even better. Thank you.
You're done?
I have more, but if it relates to this-
All right, Natalie, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So my kind of overarching feedback and questions that I have for the rest of council relates to the terms stakeholders throughout this. I very much value the criteria that reflect on the stakeholders, such as that they are disclosing all of their stakeholders, that they are, have a history of lawfully operating a business. And also, like, the owner-occupied applicants, I'm also interested in adding a criteria for owner-operated applicants. But I would like to consider if others share that to bump those up higher than some of the location-based, property-based criteria. The definition, too, of stakeholder, I think, is perhaps more narrow than it needs to be. The state defines, instead of using the definition of stakeholder for this sort of language in the state ordinance, they use the term applicant, which they define as being much broader. Any managing, managerial employee, any person holding a direct or indirect ownership interest of more than 10%. And then depending on the type of applicant, proprietors and spouses, all general and limited partners, all members and managers and their spouses, all corporate officers and spouses. So I just, I was thinking that if we simply go with that language that the state uses of applicant, and say that the definition is exactly what the state defines as applicant, we would be covering anyone who is, has a stake in, in this business, including the owner-operator as well. So that's my general feedback. Interested to hear others on it, yeah.
Any specific?
We, we can look at that, and I actually had a, a good discussion with-
Yes, thank you.
-councilmember Price this afternoon where we were kicking it around, and I told her I think there's maybe something we can do with that. With these criteria here, we're not exactly shorthand, but we were trying to, to shorten down our verbiage to one or two lines. And by stakeholder, we had intended that to be an umbrella term for persons with an ownership interest. The concern, although I recognize, as you, you mentioned, the way the state law defines applicant, it's, they, it's defined more broadly than the way we use it in the ordinance. Our initial concern when we were doing this was recognition that the actual applicants could be newly created entities that people create for perfectly legitimate reasons, tax reasons, liability reasons, business structuring reasons, even investment reasons. And what we didn't want to do is punish or, or technically eliminate anybody who creates a new entity because the new entity wouldn't have any of these, any of this history that we're talking about. So that's why our focus was more on, we're less concerned with the actual entity as much as the, the people, the, the people with ownership interest who are going to be actually the ones developing and, and running the business. So with that rather lengthy answer to your, your question, I think we can, we can work on the verbiage, or perhaps we need to for purposes of the merit-based criteria, maybe we can add a definition or two to address your concern.
Yes, I think we're on the same page that we want it to be a very broad and inclusive term, whatever it is. I was thinking applicant would be more inclusive.
Right.
Sounds like you were thinking stakeholder, whichever is chosen, as long as there's a definition.
Right, that is, that is the goal, to be, to be all-inclusive and to not be limiting.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, thank you. On, on this point, or on?
Yes, on this point.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, councilmember Henin.
Yeah, so I had the note that I felt we should de-prioritize the stakeholder-related criteria. The reason being that there can always be some side deal that transfers ownership later, and so they can, you know, jack up their points by finding a Berkeley business to be their sponsor, pay them handsomely, but then they are out of it, you know, a year later when the license comes up for renew, renewal. So my thought was the opposite, de-prioritizing those so that they can't be gamed for too much of a gain.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got comments on the one that was for 12 points. Proposed development incorporates green infrastructure into a stormwater management plan. We've got some items in there that total up to 12 points. I think we just keep to 12 points, but I think we need to add some more options in there. The reason I say that is, one of them is rain barrels. Most commercial businesses don't use rain barrels, that's more of a residential thing. So I'd like to change the wording of some of those. That one, for instance, would be rainwater harvesting, could be retention ponds, rain barrels, a number of things in that one. The one on, on pervious surfaces, I'd like to change the wording on that to, to log concrete and pavers as well. So it's, it's a little bit broader, but does the same thing. Rain gardens is in there, but we ought to need to add bio swales also. Some that weren't in there that I'd like to add would be green roofs as a possibility, stormwater planters, and green parking lots. And I've got some subcategories under those, such as vegetative strips, vegetative channel swales, dry retention basins, wet retention basins, and infiltration systems. Those could be added, keeping, giving the occupant of the building more things that he could do to meet those 12 points than just the ones that were listed there. So I'd like to submit that for consideration.
Sure. And I think all of those things certainly make sense. I just, my only concern, Jack, is I don't know if we can encompass all of them. Not, not all of your ideas, but there might be some other ideas that maybe don't fit into the specific things that we've mentioned. So I think we want to be general in how we, you know, put the terms down here, that certainly everything you mentioned fits into there, but maybe there's something that even you haven't necessarily thought of yet from an engineering standpoint that would work, that would still fit into the plan. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay, yes?
Yeah, and councilmember Blanchard's notes were much more detailed than mine, but, for example, I'm concerned about someone, rain barrels on the mass of a, you know, commercial business is not going to be very effective and not going to do much, but you can slap one on for 100 bucks and get an easy four points, and that is not, not what we need, not what we want.
Yeah, excellent. Same?
Same thing. Yep, absolutely, yep.
Sorry, for those of you that had rain barrels.
Still good.
Yeah, they're, they're okay. They're just not going to do the, the impact that we want.
Sure.
Councilmember-
Go ahead, you're okay. Thanks, Steve, no, I'm not. Thank you. Thanks, yeah, a couple, couple quick thoughts here just emerged. Back to my colleague, Councilman Henin's comment about gaming and doing some switcheroo down the road. Can we get a quick recap on the recertification, or the relicensing process after a year? And is there a way that we could ensure that if there are switcheroo or any of these kinds of gamings on those, or they've installed the rain barrels and take them away or whatever, that, that we could identify that and say, oh, you, you failed to meet, you know, some kind of minimum thing? Or is it literally just, once you get these points and you're done, and if you change your whole business plan six months after you open the door, then, then it doesn't matter? Can, can we talk about that for a second?
We have it in for moving, but not necessarily for-
Sure, sure. So that's kind of the value of having a lot of these things locked into the site plan approval process, and that we can ensure that if somebody were to break or undo their site plan, or they're not fulfilling the full approved site plan, that's grounds for us to be able to revoke a license in a year. So we, we will rely on, on that process as well. Mr. Aaron, you have some items as well?
No, I think that's, that's, that's right, Mr. Baumgartner. There are some things that we may not be able to control and maybe shouldn't be controlling in the sense that, just like any business, over time, there will be some changes, both in, in the business itself and in the investment and, and ownership. We are wary about the types of intentional things, such as Councilman Henin was mentioning, where it's kind of set up, I'm not going to say fraudulently, but designed to get a license and then things change. But there will certainly be some very legitimate reasons over time where people get in and out of the business and so on. And I don't think it's our aim that anytime there's any type of, of change like that, that it puts the, the, the license or the continuation of the license or renewal of the license in jeopardy if everything else is equal. But certainly, if there are, you know, changes of a magnitude that caused the council to have concern, really no different than we would with, with liquor licensing, you know, that could invoke or trigger review or, I guess, careful evaluation at the renewal stage, both at the state level as well as the city.
Great, thank you. That certainly explains from the, like you said, the site plan, the physical construct if it deviated too far, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and certainly, yeah, I mean, these types of things, many of these things that we're, we're talking about that relate to the, the infrastructure and aspects of the actual physical development, I expect will be baked into the site plan. And, and changes from those, unless they're of an extremely minor nature, would require, unless Director Schluto tells me I'm wrong, but typically would require some type of amendment of the site plan that would have to go through the process and be reapproved by the city.
Cool, thank you. My, the second question, I don't know if this is for Dan or for, or for Matt, in terms of the, the points early on in the, the sides you mentioned, an all-or-nothing approach. And then in the course of walking through them, we identified two of the items that had sub-numbers. And so that doesn't quite seem like an all-or-nothing if it's 20, but you can get 15 is what you said. So I just wanted to clarify, if you only get, if you only score the 15, you still get zero? Or if you get the 15, then you still get 15? Could you help on the all-or-nothing? So I can actually address that for you. That's one of the reasons why we broke out into sub-scoring, and we were specific about what we were asking for, because of the all-or-nothing approach, you could actually get a subtotal there. So you wouldn't necessarily get the full 20, but you would get each of the subscores that are pass fail. So you can get on that item, not the full 20, but say on the, actually, item that's worth 20 points here, if you do trees, public arts, but you opt out of improving green spaces or public areas, you would get those full subscores, so you'd end up a 10 there. And that's why we were trying to break out and be specific about what we're asking for in lieu of having a subjective scale like you did most of it. So we'll slide you over to here, trying to be very specific on what we ask for in that subscores. I do appreciate the specificity, but the title all-or-nothing has a different connotation. So I don't know if we want to- Understand, yes. Update our documentation to, to strike the all-or-nothing piece.
We may need to look at rephrasing that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then I had one other kind of thematic suggestion to the location base, so I guess as long as I'm rolling here. Third from the top talks about basically everything that's not in the downtown, and rationale was offered for that. It's a lot of points there, and I've mentioned before that I think that it is an important criteria, but I wouldn't want to, to penalize somebody for trying to go into the downtown area in a well-established building. A lot of those points wouldn't appear, so I'm encouraging to see that number come down a bit. And likewise, from a location base, the very last one, it almost looks like it's an afterthought, is residential property. And I think that the opportunity, if we're trying to work all the angles here to, to find a spot that's away from residence, should be a bit more encouraged. And so I, I'm glad that it's on the list, but I don't like seeing it, you know, what optics is that, that it's the very last item on our list?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henin?
Yep. Those last- Yep. Those last two points, I had exactly those same points, that I think awarding to the non-DDA areas is too high, and to move up the criteria for doesn't-abut residential. I'd also want to capture maybe if, you know, a few commercial properties are deeper than others. And so if they do a but residential, those are more, I'll say, less likely to cause problems if, if problems do occur. So some sort of distance requirement, you know, where, I don't know exactly how to form it.
I was thinking the same thing, Councilman Henon. I'm sorry for interrupting. As you were speaking, maybe we can accomplish the same thing, but account for that potential variable in terms of depth of lots and so on by putting a, instead of using the word abutting, using some type of distance proximity, that the building, the actual building or structure shall be, or having a building or structure that is, whatever, pick your number, at least 100 feet or 300 feet or whatever, away from the closest residential property.
And the best part about having a discussion here is that we can work on that. We don't have to hammer that out right now.
Yes, absolutely.
But I think that is a good point. I too would much prefer that that last bullet, that seven-point, does increase. I do disagree with my colleagues on the other one, though. And I've spoken about this many times, and we get few opportunities, at least that I've seen in my 12 years here, to really help spur development in areas that otherwise wouldn't be the first place that most people have gone in our city. It's pretty clear that, there's nothing against our DDA. I'm probably proud of our downtown areas, and I think they've done such a great job of developing and redeveloping and adjusting over time, that there are places who don't get as much support, not only from a tax base, but also just in the community because of, you know, potentially where they are from a development perspective. I have never gone into the marijuana conversation thinking that it was ever going to be some sort of windfall for the city's budget. Because if you think that, I'm telling you, it's probably not going to happen at all, even close to that. That's an easy, low-hanging fruit way to try to get someone to change their mind. Oh, the city's going to get tons of money from this, why would they not opt in? It's not the reality. One, the way that it's written, after a couple of years, and based on how cities are awarded from this. In the city of Berkeley with three, there's not going to be a lot. And I think we looked, what Matt, when we said if we had 10, how much would it be initially?
We were still projecting it would be about 1% of the total licenses in the state.
So knowing that the reality is, and anytime you've worked with Lansing, and anytime Lansing's promised you money, it doesn't always necessarily flow through the way that they say it's going to. It actually goes the other direction. We're going to hold on to this. So I'm not going into this project thinking there's going to be a windfall for the city. So my opinion on, you know, how we should, how this is going to impact our city is help use it as a development tool for those areas that need development, are crawling or crying for development, but don't have as many built-in advantages as maybe some other areas. That isn't to say that I don't want anything in the DDA. That's not the point. I mean, if somebody has a business there, and it makes all sense, and it hits all these points, great, I have no issues with that. But I would like to see proposed, especially looking at the amount of redevelopment that we're looking for in some of these top points here, could significantly change the landscape of one of those areas that, that needs some additional development, and spur other development in those same areas. You know, whether it's 23 points, and that seems too high, okay, 20, fine. I'm not, I mean, I get it. I'm not going to haggle over a few points if that's what it is, but I do not want to see that drop down to the bottom of the list. And then we may find ourselves with three dispensaries and a couple blocks in, you know, in our downtown area. And I don't think that's going to have the lasting impact, or at least potential, on our community that we could have here. Now, again, that's my opinion. I'm certainly one person. It's clear that some of my colleagues have varying perspectives as well, with certainly valid reasons. But I think we, at least, I don't want to speak for anything, I think we can all agree that proposed development is not immediately about residential property. It could stand to be worth more points.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Any issues there? Okay. Before we get into, I think this should be 24 points, and this should be 16 points, because we could be here all night, and that is not the intention, that is not going to happen. We have had, we've heard some ideas from councilmembers, some of the big areas, you know. I also do have a question on number 24, or on proposed point value 24. So proposed redevelopment includes new additional non-marijuana business, must be separate entity on premises, or on a contiguous parcel with separate means of ingress egress. So I understand that, and it makes perfect sense to me. But you've got potential marijuana business where there may be a literal windfall for that business owner, if, if things go the way that people expect. And then you've got Business B that's attached to it here that I got, that I had to have to get 24 points, but I'm not really going to even open that property. I don't need that. Barista, they're never going to get hired, because there's no reason to hire them, because I don't really care about that. I did it to get 24 points. I got 24 points. I'm making X amount of thousands of dollars a day. I'm not real worried about this other place right now. So how can we make sure that that doesn't happen? Because that secondary use, while I love it from a development standpoint, I worry it's going to be certainly the lowest priority on the development list of coming around, when it comes around, if it comes around. And then also, operating it or not even operating it is a little bit of a concern. Because, look, let's be honest, that coffee shop is not going to be the cash cow of the property. It's not designed to be. It's, I mean, in our opinion, I would like it to be, but it's not. It's going to be the other, you know, the dispensary, the retail, or the medical dispensary attached to it. What control do we have, if any, I mean, to make sure that this is an operating legitimate business in the city, other than, we shut down because we had a leak and we never reopened it, if that was even an issue, if there's any recourse on that? Is there any legal recourse, John, that we have there?
I don't know about the legal recourse at this point, particularly that the, these here in the merit-based criteria aren't necessarily regulations, but rather as our evaluating applications. I appreciate the, the feedback. We struggled with this internally, administratively, when we were looking at this criteria, and more or less recognized the, the type of concern that the mayor is raising. We thought, well, you could have somebody with a real viable second business, or you could have someone just open up a shell or a sham of a business, like have, have, have a room with one newspaper for, for sale, or something like that, that technically would comply. So we brought this to you, but really we're looking for and hoping for this type of feedback from the council as to whether this is even important to the council, or if so, would you like to see us put, try to put some type, more, more definition or teeth into it, if you will. We were even thinking in terms of like a minimum square footage requirement, or minimum, you know, amount of, of product or, or sales out of it. I mean, we, just kicking these things around, didn't come to any great epiphanies or revelations as to exactly how to do it. But we can continue to work on it if council thinks this is worthwhile.
I do, like I said, I like the idea in general, because it goes to that spirit of development and not just this, but also something else that's good for the community. But we can't compel anyone to care about that other part of the good-for-the-community if they don't. Mayor, for example?
Thank you. I, as a business owner in Berkeley, I know how hard it is to run a business. I mean, I do it every day. And, you know, you flip that sign to open, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean that people are coming in to buy what you're selling. So as a business owner, you get really creative, and you, you know, I'm not going to go into a whole big dissertation on that, but I know what it takes to run a business, and it takes a lot of hard work. It takes a little bit of luck. It takes money. It takes a lot of things. And what 24 essentially does is it asks someone to open two new businesses. And I'm not saying that, I don't, I get the intent of it, and I like the fact that it activates space that normally would not be. It stimulates development in, in areas that, to the mayor's point, maybe don't get even a second look sometimes. So I think that's all good. But I think we have to be careful about what, what are we asking somebody to do? And I'm not, I don't know that I have an answer, but that's just something that keeps, that I keep thinking about, because I do what I do every day. I also think that maybe, you know, having, we want to see the business plan for the secondary use. I don't know. It just, I just think it needs to be flushed out a little more, maybe, so.
I know, I don't want to, I want to let some people give some feedback, and then council will have a chance to then discuss again as we move forward. Again, I do not anticipate this turning into an hour-long discussion.
Thank you.
It's already gone a little longer than I kind of thought we were going to go, but these are all important points, and we need to have these conversations now, excuse me, so that we have enough time over the next few weeks to really dig into this and have a good conversation on January, and ultimately come to decisions. So you have all been very patient at this point. Any initial feedback on either some of the things we've spoken about here or other questions? Again, not how this necessarily, I have a business that's here, and what if you give me 10 points and take five away? I mean, that's not what I'm going for, but general kind of comments and feedback about what we have.
Hello, Dan Haberman, Birmingham resident and Berkeley property owner. Just to hit on a couple of the points that have been brought up, and hopefully I can bring a little clarification, or if nothing else, a little bit more info. Councilmember Price brought up a good, a good point with owner occupied versus owner operated. I think it is an important point for council to consider further. Owner occupied being, both being important, in my view. Owner occupied referring to kind of the ownership structure of the physical space, whereas owner occupied, or owner operated, would refer to the actual day-to-day management of the facility. So both are important, but having that day-to-day operator might be something desirable to, to the city. And then with regard to the, I guess, the non-DDA districts, again, policy decision for the city to make, and I think a lot of folks could, could understand the desire to increase exposure for the edges of the city. I would say also, it's an opportunity, and this, this whole kind of process is an opportunity for the city to reinvigorate interest in the DDA area, and to bring foot traffic to DDA businesses, that if, if everything is just kind of on the edges, won't happen for the rest of the city. So again, those are competing views. It might be that the city finds a way to say, you know, maybe we can do both at the same time, and maybe we can use this system to find a way to achieve multiple goals and help out the edges at the same time as helping the DDA, especially at a time when some established, really good hospitality businesses have, have left, and others are, are likely in a, in a difficult position and maybe on the way out. A couple other quick points if I can run through. We talked briefly in previous meeting about design standards and the removal of design standards. I would assume, even if just for the sake of the council expressing their desire for good-looking businesses that comply with design standards, it might be helpful if the city considers some emphasis there, even if that's eventually going to be a planning consideration, as mentioned, you know, groundwater runoff and various planning issues are going to be addressed there as well. So it, it can just be a good look for the city on that front. And, let's see, one other mention with the, I tried to get on today, to check out the, the drafts. The website was up very briefly, and then everything disappeared. So the page for marijuana business information has been, I know everything, the, the drafts uploaded at some time late morning, early afternoon, and then not too long after that, the whole thing disappeared.
It's been back up for quite a while.
It wasn't when I left to drive here tonight.
The site was down for about 34 minutes.
Okay. Well, we'll definitely check that to make sure that it's up.
Okay, appreciate that. And I guess those are my points. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Hey, Dana Mori from On Wakefield, resident of Berkeley. I just wanted to talk a little bit more about the 15-pointer, the experience, one-year experience operating a Michigan marijuana business. As our count this morning, there's approximately only 10 companies that could qualify for that. What you have to do is be licensed as of a year before February 2020. And the way the licensing process works, there's not many companies that have been licensed that long. But even so, I'm assuming the goal is to have a experienced license holder, and there are actually about 30 other states that have laws where marijuana is legal, that have people that have much more experience than one year. So I don't know why we'd, we'd limit it to Michigan. I think that we should open it up to experience out of multiple states. We could get top companies that are actually bringing top talent in from out of state, which would be a benefit to the city. And if the intent is to have people that know the specific Michigan laws, laws from state to state are usually based off the prior state's laws. So people that do know, let's say, Arizona, Nevada, California laws, can usually step right in, and if they don't know Michigan laws right away, they've got enough experience with marijuana laws to, to be able to follow the laws. So I think it's a great idea to have points for experience. I would just ask that you open it up to other states' experience as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Hi, I'm Chris Clamkin. I'm a owner-operator here in Berkeley at 2838 Coolidge. I just wanted to point out a couple of facts when you talk about abutting residential properties. The actual facts are that crime goes down in these communities, an average of 17 fewer crimes per community that a dispensary gets dropped into, and property values go up. So for every dollar spent in that dispensary, $2.50 gets spent in the surrounding businesses. So I just urge you to consider, you know, a but versus, you were saying, distance to the property?
Right.
There's ways to look at this. It's a huge benefit to the community around it. The 10-pointer, I'm sorry, the nine-pointer disclosing the stakeholders, I just had a simple question. Where will that information go? Because a lot of these investors are very high-profile, public profiles, that may not want it to be exposed publicly. And I would just ask that if we expose all of our people supporting us as business operators, that it may not be leaked to the public, because they may not want their other business interests to be exposed to their cannabis interests. And I'll just back up what a fellow audience member said. The 15-pointer, 1996, California went medical, 33 states since then. And there's a ton of great operators with out-of-state experience that are being recruited, or coming into the state to operate great businesses. I'd encourage you to look at their experience as well as you consider the 15-pointer. And I'd also argue one opinion here. The medical patient caregiver model that started here in 2008 actually may promote, and this is my opinion, not a fact, but more of the black market and gray market, 12 plants at a time. I'd argue that experience here in Michigan may not be as good as out-of-state operators that have operated in one of the nine recreational states prior to ours. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We've heard some points, we've discussed some points. We had some, some additional feedback brought up by some of the folks here. So kind of going around one more time for council before we move on to, to our next item. Any, I think all the feedback we've gotten to this point, I think hopefully, Mr. Baumgarten, Dan, you have kind of an idea of some of the things that council's looking for. Again, we don't, I don't anticipate that whatever the, the next draft is before the meeting to be the final. Anyway, that's where we're going to have this discussion again in, in public and make sure that we get to that point, but it will happen at the next meeting. So additional feedback from council, things maybe we haven't discussed yet, if there's anything we've kind of missed or something we want to kind of push a little bit more? Natalie, I know you had something before.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Henon's concern about prioritizing stakeholders. I think a few of the criteria, like if they can demonstrate a history of lawfully operating a business, or that they've disclosed 100% of owners and stakeholders, I think those specifically should be bumped up to be very high, if they're not already covered in the fact that they've received licenses or the pass/fail criteria. I think that those should be, I would advocate for them being the highest things that we value in the application.
Okay. That's what we're having.
So I could agree that those particular, in particular, could be higher, yeah. So, I could agree that those particular, in particular, could be higher, yeah.
I agree they could be higher. Don't agree they shouldn't be the highest. Continue.
Yes. That is the political statement I made, yes. The empty storefront issue, you know, do we end up with storefronts, you know, that are empty? While you were saying that, some ideas that went through my mind, instead of making them also operated, make it so that they're building a retail unit that somebody else can lease or buy, who will have an incentive to make their business work. But, on the negative sides, what if the marijuana business is so concerned with their own business, they become a bad landlord and don't give the new person that they need? And then maybe even from a zoning law, are we now straying too far from, you know, although this isn't law, this is, you know, the merit criteria, but are we straying too far from what can be a reasonable requirement from a marijuana business that, you know, we're just asking too much, that, that we can't justify strictly on, you know, police powers over the marijuana operations? Then, the one other item I had was with the, it's very difficult to rank these in a specific order, and one thought I had that would, you know, for example, our, you know, bottom one is, you know, the top ones three times as valuable as the bottom one, but if the point scores started at 50 or 100, that difference becomes less. We still avoid the ties, but the differential becomes less and so they aren't quite, some of them don't become so overwhelming against the other ones.
Okay. No, I think that's, you know, something to discuss, not having, I mean, in the reality, the whole point of this is to have some that certainly weigh more and have a more significant impact, but there is a large disparity between the top and the bottom, and I understand what you're, what you're saying there. As far as the other point you brought up, councilmember Henon, I don't think that we have gone too far or necessarily going too far. I think it's just more of, you know, your, your point of, yes, having maybe leasing the property and then you've got to find someone to lease it. And if you don't, then it's just going to sit there empty and how aggressive are you going to be of finding a lease if you don't necessarily need that space because it's coming in? I agree. I think we need to spend some time thinking about how we can, how should we certainly fix that particular item, because I do, the intent, the spirit of it, I wholeheartedly support, but how that looks in reality and the consequences or unintended consequences, I'm a little concerned about. Additional comments on our metric system as we, our merit system as it is today? No? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for providing some feedback today and for playing nicely in, within the rules that were, you know, hopefully established to try to maintain order and efficiency in our meetings. And thank you, councilmembers, for these comments. It's definitely something that we are going to see updates and more addition, more questions, or not questions, but feedback on before we get to resolution next meeting. All right. Ms. Mitchell, what is the next item on our agenda?
Communications with councilmember Blanchard, beginning.
Councilmember Blanchard, you are up.
Thank you, your honor. Just one quick thing this evening. It's Christmas season, one of the worst times for fires. In the past, I have been called out in the middle of the night on Christmas Eve to fight fires. Not looking forward to that, so just want everybody to be careful. Don't put Christmas trees next to fireplaces. People have done that and we've been there to put them out. If you burn candles, burn them carefully, burn them in something that won't cause a fire or won't get tipped over easily. And just use common sense and have a great holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Price?
Yes. So since our last council meeting, I attended the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee meeting where the committee reviewed the communications plan. The committee was impressed by the thoroughness of the plan. Thank you to Tori Mathis, our Citizens Engagement Officer, for that. The Communications Advisory Committee hopes that it can complement the master plan process. The committee also recommended Eileen Stedman to fill the open seat because of her great knowledge of the city and the valuable perspective she offers to the group. So welcome back, Eileen. Thank you for your service. Looking forward to continuing to work with you on that committee. The next meeting of the CAC, instead of doing it on New Year's Day, we decided to bump it to Thursday, January 9th. The library board will meet again this Wednesday. A few upcoming events of note include hiking Ecuador with Chris Hiller. I hear we're not actually going to be going on the hike, but we get to hear about his experience as hiking. He's going to share stories of his adventures. And then there'll be an after-party at Amiches, and that is on Thursday, January 9th during our Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee, of course. But if you're not going to one, go to the other. On Thursday, January 23rd, there'll be a presentation about getting started with your genealogy research, and experts going to come and teach us how to pursue learning about our ancestors. And on Tuesday, January 28th, at 6:30, Erin Jonah Lewis will be performing fiddle and banjo music at the library. Matt Church promises a lively and entertaining concert. I also just wanted to say that the Holiday Lights Parade was absolutely wonderful. Sharing Berkeley pride and festive joy with family, friends, and neighbors made the night magical. Thank you to all of the volunteers and their elves for making that magic happen. It was a fantastic experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, your honor. A couple of quick updates as well. The historical committee meets in January. They did a lot of work leading up to the Holiday Lights Parade, and I want to thank the volunteers of the committee for staffing the museum before and during and after Santa's arrival. I saw a lot of, lot of folks go into the museum to, to warm up, to get some cookies, and to get a few pieces of information about, about our city's past and the future that awaits. And the museum is open most Sundays from 2:00 to 4:00, and on Wednesdays from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The Technology Advisory Committee meets in two days' time on Wednesday, the 18th, and they are working in partnership with the Historical Committee to help them with some technology needs so that they can advance their objectives on that committee. And in terms of a quick cyber tip, for those of you that do plan to do shopping this year, whether it's online or locally, hopefully locally as well, there's ways that you can set on your credit cards to give you a notification if a charge has been incurred on your account, like get a text message or something like that. It's advised to activate that if you can, because that way, in case there is any fraudulent activity on your card, you'll know it almost immediately. You would get a text message saying, you know, vendor, blah, 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 $400. You can say, what, you know, I didn't do that. You can know within minutes of that happening now so that you can begin to, to investigate that. So consider turning that feature on if, if your bank offers that and if you haven't already done so. And the Downtown Development Authority, DDA, their board met last week, Wednesday, the 11th. They're continuing to prepare to repost for their executive director position. There's some internal conversation about the exact nature of that position, but, but it's, they are, they continue their resolve to, to move forward with filling that important position. They want to, and we all want to thank the businesses, the shoppers, the volunteers, and everyone who helped participate in a series of fantastic Merry Month events throughout December, and to continue to spend your, your money here in the city, again, with that credit card thing, if you choose to pay that way. And for more information on upcoming events in our downtown, you can visit downtownberkeley.com. And finally, it was, it was the Charlie Brown, it's that Charlie Brown, who once said, "It is not what's under the Christmas tree that matters, it's who's around it." So when we think about our holiday seasons around whatever artifact you choose to gather your family, please celebrate those folks and all that they do for your lives, and then spread it out a little bit. Think about your neighbors and those elders in our community that, that could benefit from, from an extra hug this holiday season. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
So I just want to congratulate Brianna Burge again on joining the Berkeley Department of Public Safety. We're really happy to have you. As I reflect on this, on the holiday season, I think about our Berkeley motto, it's "We Care." And so it, then I think about the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance, and, and I see people caring all year round. And again, I'm just grateful that that organization is so active and vibrant in our community. If you, you know, as we go through the holidays, if you know someone that's alone, maybe drop by for a visit. If you know someone who's food insecure, take a meal, because at the end of the day, you are the gift. We are the gifts to each other. And so if we can kind of think about that during the holiday season amid the hustle and bustle and, and even to, to carry that through the year, that's going to be my goal. I'm going to be starting talks, I'm calling them "Open Door" because basically I had great conversations at the doors during my campaigning for my council seat. So the first one is Tuesday, January 21st, at 6:00 at the library, so, and I'll be, I'll be setting aside time regularly, but I will probably change the days and times to accommodate people's schedules, but please feel free to drop by and I'm happy to have a conversation with you about any city issue. Parks and Rec update. Tickets are now on sale for the winter dances put on by the Berkeley Junior Women's Club and the Berkeley Parks and Recreation Department. Ticket prices are $10 for a couple or $5 for additional sons or daughters. All are welcome to attend. So the Mother-Sun Superhero Dance is Saturday, January 25th, 4:30 to 5:30, 6:00 to 7:00, 7:30 to 8:30. Daddy-Daughter Frozen Winter Wonderland Dance on Saturday, January 18th, also staggered start times.
Got that, thanks.
Limited space is still available for Winter Vacation Camp on December 26th, 27th, January 2nd and 3rd, and registration for winter, excuse me, winter programs is now open and ongoing. So if you want more information about any of those things, please call the Parks and Rec Department, or you can look online. I too will echo councilmember Price's sentiments, thanking Cindy Coon and her committee, Lisa Kempner and the Juniors for a fabulous Berkeley Hometown Holiday Lights Parade. And I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and all the best in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henon?
Yes, the Zoning Board of Appeals met last week. They denied the request for a screened porch that would have encroached in a side yard setback, and they also declined the variances for parking and a trailer-mounted MRI machine at the Family Video location. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, your honor. You're going to have to do shifts, by the way, for the Daddy-Daughter Dance.
Only have three at that point.
The Planning Commission meeting is actually tomorrow, December 17th, at 7:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. The Environmental Advisory Board and Coolidge Committee was, resume meetings in January. Similarly to council, or Mayor Protem Dean, I would echo councilmember Price's comments about the Holiday Lights Parade. It really is kind of an infectious time of year, so many blessings to be grateful for. So, including all the volunteers, as was mentioned, and this year, the weather, certainly. So I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of upcoming dates. We have our Coolidge Update Meeting for the public. We scheduled that for the 19th, so that is coming up on Thursday. It'll be 6:30 in the Public Safety Conference Room on the second floor of that building. The next day, both the library and City Hall will be closed. We'll be doing an in-service training for ALICE. ALICE is an acronym for the manner in which you would address an active assailant. So real holiday cheer going on right there. But it was, it was a day where we could, actually we had a ton of staff together, and it's a, it's a very important skill set to have. So anybody, still be able to pay their bills, drop off anything they need to City Hall, we just, we'll be, staff will be in training, so that is this Friday and on the 20th. Then also, my family as well had a fantastic time at the parade. I thank you very much for all the volunteers that make that happen. Would also like to give a plug for an event happening actually outside of Berkeley, and I won't make a habit of that, but anybody who has not had the chance to go to Moon Beans or Sweet Dreams at Beaumont has really been missing out. It is, it's heartwarming. You see departments represented all across Southeast Michigan. Our own Berkeley Public Safety Department has been there, I think, each and every night with, with vehicles and lights. The night my family got to go, the Sheriff's Department actually to fly over with their helicopter and shined the searchlight there. So it's, it's great to be around people that are all trying to do well, but it's, it's nearly a tear-jerking moment when you look up in the windows and see all the kids shining lights back at you that are spending the holidays in the, in the hospital under, I'm sure, unpleasant circumstances. So it's, it's a fantastic event. I highly recommend it. Everybody have a chance to go. It's, it's, just makes you cry, basically. And last but not least, for myself, my family, and then all of our Berkeley staff and administration, Happy Holidays to all, Christmas, Hanukkah, New Year's, New Year's Day. Happy and joyous holidays for all.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, anything this evening, since it's the last one on 2019?
I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Stearns?
Just on councilman Blanchard's point, it made me recall about the trees and keeping them watered. It made me recall, I just, I think it might have been over the weekend, I was driving by a local fire department, may have been in Farmington Hills, and they actually have a banner out in front that says something to the effect that, "Please water your trees so that we don't have to." It's humorous, but, but it is important that it makes the point. Beyond that, as the last couple of speakers have mentioned, I wish, wish all of you and the audience as well, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a very happy 2020 coming up right around the corner.
Thank you. I want to thank Mayor Protem Dean for pinch hitting in my absence earlier, and when I showed up, it sounds like everything kind of grinded to a halt. Really moving along and, and then everything, everything got shut down. I do appreciate that. I apologize for my absence. It is my daughter's eighth birthday, and I promised that I would take her to dinner, and I did that. Still was able to get here. So happy birthday, Emma. I mean, you should be long in bed by now. In case you're not, I'll be home in a little bit, so go to bed. And, you know, the Daddy-Daughter Dance, we heard about, some comments about that, yeah, I mean, I'll get there. But there's a Mother-Sun Dance, too. I hope my mom is paying attention. It's the 25th. I get a ticket, I will certainly go to that as well, and we can do back-to-back weekends. And, and like my colleagues, you know, the Holiday Lights Parade is one of the most enjoyable experiences every year. Look, despite the weather last year and as cold and rainy as it was, it was still a great time. It was tremendous this year and great weather. It again, reiterates the fact to my children that I do know Santa. I spoke with him, they saw me speak with him. I have, you know, pretty, I have a cell phone number now, so they better behave for at least the next however many days I have before I lose that leverage. And, you know, we thank Cindy every year, Cindy and Lisa and the Juniors for everything they did, but Cindy Coon is a, is a true warrior. Not only, you know, she does everything that she does every year getting ready for the parade, making sure that it just is a spectacular event. This year, she tripped and had a little, a little fall, and that did not stop her for more than a couple of seconds from doing, she just wasn't even concerned with her own safety, where I was concerned with her well-being a little bit more, but she was not going to let that stop her, and she just made sure that everything went off as well as it possibly could have. And I do want to give her a very special shout-out because I would, I was saying, Cindy, you got to, you know, go, you know, relax, but she would not let that happen, and she was there on the gazebo, and thank you, Cindy, really, for, for everything that you do for that event. It is a truly magical night for not only the residents of Berkeley, but everybody else that's there, and I certainly appreciate that. And certainly Lisa and the Juniors for the tree lighting and everything else at the gazebo, the Merry Month that councilmember Baker talked about. It's just, it's a great time, it's a magical time of year, and now we're going to be coming to the end of it, at least for council. So I certainly wish everybody a happy holiday season, and at this point, we will see you officially in 2020. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion to adjourn by Mayor Protem Dean with support from councilmember Baker. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbran?
Yes. The December 16, 2019 meeting of the 38th Council is adjourned.